Good evening. I would like to call the order, Calistoga Planning Commission Regular Meeting, November 14th, 2018. Could we have a roll call, please?
For the record that all commissioners are in attendance.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to C, Public Comments. Public Comments is an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items of interest to the public that do not appear on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes. The comments cannot -- excuse me, the Commission cannot consider any issues or take action on items raised during public comment. Anyone out there feel like they'd like to come up and make a public comment? Okay.
My name is Sally Manfredi. I'm the Secretary of the Calistoga Community Garden, and I want everybody to know that we have sent out our membership forms to our current members who've been waiting for three seasons, and we'll open it up to the general public after we've been waiting.
Thank you, Sally.
There'll be something in the paper if anybody wants to have a talk.
Okay. Anyone else? C, none. We'll move on. Looking for a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as presented?
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commission and correspondence. Communication and correspondence, excuse me.
Yes, you've received a number of emails this evening that were received by staff after distribution of the packet. They're regarding item G2.
Are copies of those available to the public, right?
Yes, they are, except for Sally's.
Okay, thank you. Consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 24th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Moving on to public hearings. First item on the agenda on G1 is 940 Highlands Court Use Permit and Design Review, UP 2018-11, and DR 2018-8, consideration of a use permit and design review application for a single-family home on an existing lot at 940 Highlands Court. May we have a staff report, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Happy to bring you the first item tonight. It's a consideration of a use permit and design review for a single-family home at 940 Highland Court. This is Lot 4 of the Highland Court subdivision. The lot is 1.7 acres. This is the only lot in the eight-lot subdivision that is zoned rural, residential hillside, and that's why this item does need a use permit. To give you a little bit of the context of the location, this is at the southwestern end of the cul-de-sac. The lots, it's a pretty sloped lot. It's characterized as scattered woodland and scrub brush. Currently, homes are under construction on the lots on either side of the property on the cul-de-sac. There is a home located on the large lot behind it that's accessed by petrified forest. This new home should not be visible from that home as it's sighted on a sloped lot and due to the vegetation on the property. The other nearby property is the Bear Flag Inn, and again, because of the trees that are planned to remain on the property, the home really should be relatively well-screened from the Bear Flag Inn. The proposed home would be two stories with three bedrooms for a total of 4,300 square feet. The architectural style is best described as a contemporary farmhouse style. It features board-and-bat siding, stone veneer, and a composite roof. I'm going to pass around a material and colors board of the home. The design is generally complementary to the other seven homes in the subdivision and the surrounding area. Staff believes it conforms with both the zoning code and the general plan in the following ways. It's sensitive to its surroundings. It's designed to complement both natural and existing man-made features on the site and in the surrounding area. It preserves a high number of the existing trees. There are 57 on the site, I believe, and it preserves over 50 of those. The articulated facade and the use of natural appearing materials are compatible with other homes in the area as well. I would note that the home is located in the very high fire hazard severity zone of the city. Generally, and we do have an attachment, it's Attachment 6, that has that map. Generally, almost everything to the southwest of Foothill Boulevard in Calistoga is in that zone. There are a few lots adjacent to this actual parcel that are not in the zone, so the other seven homes in that subdivision were not located in this very high fire hazard zone, but this is the one home that is. As such, it will have to comply with heightened wildland urban interface standards and heightened building standards for fire safety and fireproofing. I would note that the building official and the fire chief have all reviewed these plans and are confident that it can conform with those standards, and additional review will occur when the full packet is submitted for building permits. And as such, there is a condition in the resolution that's attached that provides that it has to comply with those standards. I'll also note that the home is covered by the negative declaration that was adopted for the entire subdivision all the way back in 1991, and that's Attachment 5 in your packet. To date, no comments have been received from the public about this application, and the applicant is here, both him and his architect, and with that, staff recommends approval of both the use permit and design review for this property.
Very good. Any questions of staff, Commissioners?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
The Arborist Report is included. As the project would be approved, will that be incorporated and becomes part of the approval? There was a couple of notes in there that the design would be slightly modified in the yard space to accommodate an oak tree?
Yeah, so the Arborist Report, it will be part of it. One of the things in the conditions of approval is that a tree preservation plan will have to be submitted and approved, and it'll have to conform with the city ordinance.
And that will be then processed as part of the construction documents?
Yes, absolutely.
Second thing, do you know, has there been a hydrant pressure test to know that there's enough pressure up there for that elevation?
You know, I feel like we had a discussion on this, and I'm trying to remember if there's a condition in here that they have to provide a study, or if it hasn't been done already. Let me look through here really quick.
Is that what your normal condition builds in there?
Yes. Yeah, I believe it's in the conditions, yep.
It does talk about, the last condition refers to a fire suppression sprinkler system.
There it is.
So as part of that, the calculations would be submitted.
Yeah.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
And because this was a design review item, it was circulated to all the neighboring parcels?
Yep, 300 feet.
So everyone's been noticed?
Absolutely.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up and invite the applicant, if they'd like, to come forward.
Thank you, Zach. My name's Aaron Roden with Ryder Homes. Good evening, Commissioners. Zach, you did a great job kind of explaining the project and where we are at in the process. 1991 is a long time ago. This is kind of one of the next steps in completing this project. The homes on the remaining, on the flat lots are under construction right now, so this is the next step in really finishing this cul-de-sac and this subdivision. Adam Gardner is here this evening, the architect on the project, if you have any specific questions relating to the architecture. A couple of things I'd like to add. When we sighted this home and plotted this home, we took into consideration the opening on the site where there are no trees. There's a couple of different openings in the site there where the minimum amount of tree removal is possible, and we selected the location closest to the cul-de-sac to limit the grading as much as possible, to limit the impact to the environment. I also reached out to Dennis at Bear Flag Inn and spoke to him on the phone. Had a conversation with him last week, as well as over a year ago when the first design review hearing took place. Our conversation, at least he didn't have any issues during that conversation with the design of this home or the plotting of it. I also reached out to Doug Molitor, the other adjacent resident who I met with over a year and a half ago. His biggest concern at that time was the plotting of the home as far from his property as possible, which is what we've done here. I wasn't able to communicate with him prior to this hearing in the last two weeks, but I did reach out again to him. So that's really all I have to add to the process that we went through, but obviously, this house was designed specifically for this lot, and we took into consideration the hillside and the existing trees as much as possible. So if you guys have any questions for me or for our architect, I'd be happy to answer them.
Very good, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anyone else would like to come forward, please feel free to do so. Yes, Doug.
So I am the adjoining property, one of the adjoining property owners, and--
Doug, just give your name, that's all you need.
Oh, Doug Molitor, 2771 Foothill. And I did have a conversation with Aaron, and he was very understanding of my wanting to keep the one specimen oak that's there in the middle of what field there is, so I appreciate the work that's been done. The only thing I object to is this wooden fence. This is what it's called, good neighbor fence. There's going to be some distance between myself and this house, and I would much prefer a box wire fence or something that didn't block that view. And, you know, that's just a matter of taste, but I would prefer you take that into consideration. I don't see any need for a wooden fence, however many feet I am away from your house, and would make my life feel a little less fenced in.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Dennis McNee. I have the Bear Flag Inn down the hill. I have two concerns that just, well, it's rural residential hillside, and so it's going to be fairly well-monitored, I assume, as far as the construction and what they do. But, you know, it seems like there's quite a few trees up there. There can be 57 trees. I'm going to take five out. They could take a lot more out, and I think it would be less of a fire hazard for all of us in that area, because that is kind of a bad area being on the hillside. And those oak trees, you know how they hold up. But anyway, the other issue is the water runoff, which they assured me they're going to take care of that. But the issue I have is the plating, the roof structure, the asphalting. I just wonder what percentages those are of the whole lot, if anybody has any idea. I grew up in California, and I've seen a lot of houses slide down the hill, and this just happens to be my backyard. And I just wonder how they're going to anchor this thing up there so it stays there, because that, you know, that dirt is kind of, I'm sure they've done studies on it, but hopefully it'll stay up there. That's kind of my only concern.
Understood, and I'll let the applicant, I'm dealing with that myself. I was like, you know, I'm a general contractor, so on a regular basis, but I think I'll probably let the applicant speak on that. It is a state law that mandates a control of the runoff for a lot of the reasons you just brought up, so, and they're addressed through the building permit process, and there's guidelines by the state they have to address, so.
Well, I understand that. You understand that, but not everybody understands that.
No, it's a good question.
Things change after the house sells.
Yes, they do. That's very true. But they're good questions, Dennis.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If the applicant would like to address that, they certainly welcome to. I mean, it's--
Yeah, first of all, Douglas, we'd be happy to put the deer fence or box wire fence in if that's your prerogative. We're definitely willing to do that. And then on Dennis's concern as far as the water runoff, there is a V-ditch that's designed below the house between the new home being built and Dennis's property that should catch the surface flow and should reduce any drainage onto his property. Obviously, we've hired a geotechnical engineer and a civil engineer to design to the state standards, to meet those standards, and will be required to be on-site during grading and then final installation of the construction improvements.
Very good, thank you.
Just as a note, I just did a quick calculation. If we assume that your footprint is somewhere around 3,000 square feet, and you have 1.7 acres, your footprint is about 4 percent.
Is it 5.8%? That's it?
No, that was just the house, so, but it's all, obviously, a pretty small amount relative to what is allowable.
Through the Chair, it's actually 5.8% of coverage.
Is that all the coverage?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else out there? C, none. I'll close the public hearing and ask Commissioners if they have any question of the applicant or of staff at this point.
The only thing I would note, as I went through the Arborist Report, and I would hope that we would be specific about when those plans came in, I noticed that on a couple of the oaks, again, there's one in the Arborist Report that mentions that the applicants, that they will make a slight modification in the yard space, and that was to accommodate the tree that is tagged 338, which is a valley oak. There's another valley oak, which is tagged 308, which is right above the driveway and appears to be a cut slope down to the driveway. And that, and it's, and the tree is weighted on the other side, so I'm hoping that, there's no indication they intend to take that tree out. It is a particularly spectacular tree, and so I'm hoping that they will be able to accommodate the driveway and make that tag number 308 work.
Yeah, 308 is planned on the plans to be retained, and I believe the plans also indicate that there'll be an exclusion zone around that tree as well as some of the other trees during construction.
Yeah, well, it's pretty close to the driveway, so, and it appears that it's a cut slope, so somebody's got to pay attention to that one.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from Commissioners? If not, I'll entertain them.
I just actually point out, I appreciate the applicant's willingness to accommodate a request on the fly. If all of our developers were as neighborly, it'd be a lot easier to do our jobs, so.
Very true. Okay, that being said, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2018-20, approving use permit 2018-11, and design review 2018-8 for a single-family home located at 940 Highland Court.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, if I can find my agenda here. To G2, Buster's Barbecue Height Variance, VA 2018-4, consideration of a variance request to allow an increase in the height of an accessory structure from 15 feet to 16 feet, 16-foot-three to allow the construction of Ann Arbor at 1205 Foothill Boulevard. Staff report, please.
All right, thank you, Chair. So this is a consideration of a variance application for a 1 foot 3 inch height increase of an accessory structure located at Buster's Barbecue. The area where this is located, it's a pretty busy area. It's characterized by commercial and visitor uses, including two service stations and the Craftsman Inn next door. The subject property has a variety of both primary and accessory structures. There are two primary structures, the dining structure that's closest to the street, and the kitchen building that's immediately behind it. There are then several accessory structures also on the property. The two lots that this encompasses both slope up away from the street at a moderate rate of slope, with the rate of slope definitely increasing as you approach the rear of the property. The applicant was issued a building permit, B1699, for a 14-foot open arbor structure. Inspections over the course of 2018 revealed that the arbor structure under construction was nearly 26 feet tall. Subsequent code enforcement actions resulted in the structure being modified to its current height of 16 feet 3 inches. Now, in the downtown commercial district, the height limit for an accessory structure is 15 feet. The code defines height as the vertical distance from the natural grade along each elevation. For structures with pitched or sloping roofs, like the structure subject here, the top for height measurement purposes is actually the mean distance between the eaves and the peak. So you can have a structure that you took a tape measure out there to the very tallest part, would actually be, could be higher than 15 feet, but if you measured according to the way the code defines height, that's sort of the average between the eaves and the peak, it could be underneath 15 feet and compliant. So in granting a variance, there are four required findings that must be met, and I'm going to go through each of them individually. The first is that there are conditions that apply to the property which do not generally apply to other properties in the zone or vicinity. While the sloping nature of the property is somewhat unique for the downtown commercial district, it is not necessarily unique for properties in the immediate vicinity. Virtually all the properties that are on the southwest side of Foothill in that immediate vicinity do have some degree of slope, and absent other evidence, staff does not believe this specific finding can be met. The second required finding is that the variance is necessary for the preservation of a property right substantially the same as possessed by owners of other properties in the zone or vicinity. Any accessory structure on any other similarly zoned and situated properties would face the same height limitations. Staff's been out, visited some of the adjacent properties, and we have not found any other accessory structures on the sloped parcels in the immediate vicinity that exceed 15 feet in height under the zoning code's definition for height. One of the examples I'd point to that is actually on Buster's property is the cooler that's immediately next to this structure. If you went out there with a tape measure, it's 18 feet to the peak. It's an accessory structure. From the bottom of the, or bottom of the eaves to the peak is 8 feet, so it's 10 feet, and then 8 feet on the pitched part. Half of that's 4 feet, so under our zoning code definition, that is only a 14-foot tall structure. So with absent any other evidence to the contrary, staff does not believe this finding can be met either. The third required finding is that the authorization of the variance will not be detrimental to the zoning code, be injurious to property owners in the same zone or vicinity, or conflict with city development properties. Now, while staff does not believe that the height increase would be detrimental to other property owners, staff does believe that it would be in conflict with the general plan policies pertaining to the entry corridor overlay, one of the policies of which is to promote small-scale, low-rise design. The zoning code, of course, is intended to implement general plan policies, and the 15-foot height limitation is one of those. Therefore, staff thinks that this finding is pretty difficult to meet under those circumstances. The final required finding is that the variance requested is the minimum which will alleviate the hardship. Here, the applicant has actually demonstrated that there were alternatives that would work, particularly in light of a building permit that was approved for a 14-foot tall structure. The applicant also cites needed clearance under the arbor as a reason for the current height. There is evidence that the floor-level grade of the area under the arbor was raised during construction above what existed when this was an open patio. Pictures that are included in your packet as Attachment 4 show you sort of the prior condition and the current condition. And as it appears that there were and are viable alternatives, staff does not believe that this required finding can be met either. Staff acknowledges that there are, is an existing use permit for live entertainment on the property, and that's not one of the topics of discussion tonight, nor was this structure a requirement of that use permit. There were six comments, the last one coming in just before the meeting started, received by email or hand-delivered. They've been placed in front of you. Copies, with the exception of the final one that just came in, are in the back available to public. Staff's recommendation is to deny the variance due to lack of satisfying the needed findings. Alternatively, should the Commission support the variance, staff asks that you provide direction on those four needed findings and continue the public hearing to the meeting on December 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by any Commissioners?
Is everybody in agreement between ourselves and the parties involved with the methodology of the measurement and the measurements themselves?
I can't speak to the other parties. I know these measurements, and I'll let the Planning and Building Director correct me if I'm wrong. These were done by the building official during coded compliance inspections, and they are reflected what's on the plans. And the methodology for the measurements in terms of the interpretation of the zoning code is the city's interpretation of that.
Methodology was reviewed with the applicant?
I believe it has been, yes.
And I just wonder, when they had the first non-conforming use with a higher elevation, and they brought it down to this elevation, why didn't they bring it down to code at that time?
You know, I don't know the specific reasons for that.
Maybe I'm asking the question to the wrong person.
No, does the Planning and Building Director know that answer?
We were not consulted when it was lowered initially.
Do we know what it would cost to correct it?
No.
We don't.
You'd have to ask that of the applicant.
Okay, that's all.
I only have, I have just one question. The plans that we've been given in our packet, they are the plans that were, the permit was issued against. Is that correct?
No, the plans that you have were submitted as part of the variance application, and they are the as-built as currently exists.
Oh, okay, because I didn't seem to jive for, and I just wanted to make that as a public--
It was not included in your packet. I do have the original plans from the original building permit submission, though.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to be cleared up real quick, but I don't want to make assumptions, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if there's no more questions to be raised by the Planning Commissioners, I will open the public hearing, and if the applicant would like to come up first, that would be great. If not, that's their prerogative. Anyone like to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Charles Davis. I am the owner or part-owner of Buster's Barbecue at 1207 Foothill Boulevard. I couldn't quite hear everything that Mr. Zach was saying, but to boil it all down for you, there's exactly 2 foot 7 and 3, or 2 foot 7 inches difference between the upper part of my canopy or my arbor to the lower part. That is the difference of grade that was there when I first submitted the set of plans that got approved, and then when I submitted the first set and the second set, it was not brought up that there was a difference in the grade issue. So the grade has not changed. So the permit that I got approved for the first time on the grade is the same grade that is there that I got approved for the second time. The issue is now is that the part that's up close to the hill is roughly 2 foot, or it's exactly where it's supposed to be, and then the piece down at the bottom is roughly 2 foot taller than that. Well, that's exactly the grade difference from top to bottom. Nothing changed. All been approved the first and second time. The reason that the arbor's there in the first place, I was given a permit to have music. And so the other thing about that music permit that people are not aware of, I have to have control of the sound. I have put in extensive equipment to control the sound, and now when it's being played, the roof on the top of my arbor will cause the noise to go up, come down, and go against the mountain. The first set of plans that were put there, were shown to the city, did not have any walls in it. Therefore, the sound just went out. I put the walls in there, and on the second set of plans, these walls were included. Now, I'm going to admit, I make a lot of mistakes in my life, and I'll continue to have a lot of mistakes. So I paid for this mistake, and now I'm asking you to take a look exactly what the accomplishment is out there. As far as being, I couldn't hear I say everything that he had to say. As far as being in the entrance of the city, I think after 18 years that I have made an improvement that has been outstanding. If you want to take a look at the original building there, it's still there, but look at everything that's been put around. Not only that, I serve-- Not only that, I serve as a melting pot for people to come in and to enjoy music, jazz and blues. That's what it's all about. That's why I went to so much expense, a lot of expense, to get this done. So now we're talking about 2 feet. 2 feet to keep it like it is. 2 feet that I will have more ability to control the sound. 2 feet, that shouldn't make anybody any difference because you have to look hard to see it from the street. 2 feet. That's all we're talking about. 2 feet, gentlemen. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would have been happy to share, oh, I'm sorry, Sally Manfredi, 1001 Foothill Boulevard, Calistoga, California. I didn't know that this meeting was happening until my husband told me this tonight. So let me read what I have, and I'm sorry, I didn't share it with everybody earlier. I would have liked to. "If the intention of the new arbor is to lessen the impact of live music on the neighbors, I'm here to tell you it's not working. It has never been quite so loud as it was last Sunday, November 11th, at 3:00 p.m. I sincerely hope the commission follows the recommendation of staff."
Thank you. Anyone else?
With all respect to Sally, this isn't the issue, excuse me, Jeff Smith, 1111 Berry Street. This isn't an issue about noise. No, it isn't, because we have monitoring equipment that monitors the noise. If there's an issue with noise, that needs to be addressed. That isn't an issue here, in my opinion. So I get paid to play music at Buster's Barbecue, and it's a great thing to me. And I always had the dream to hit the road and play in a band for one year just to see what it felt like. But I always had three daughters that I had to care for as a single parent, so I never did that. What an opportunity this is for me to play music at Buster's Barbecue. That's not the issue either here. It seems like to me that 2 feet or 1'3 inches is really a minimal amount to request for a variance. I, I've seen variances issued through this board and approved by the city council that were, in my opinion, ridiculously applied. And in fact, one of mine, I'm sure Lynn Goldberg's aware of, is next door. There's been some things done there that are absolutely absurd. What Buster's asking for here is an understanding of the elevation differences, from what I understand. And I'm just, I'm, I'm just beside myself trying to figure out why this 1'3 inches is such a big deal, and why in this paperwork you denote "does not apply," "does not apply" in bold letters, as if you're trying to prove something that couldn't be typed in regular I'd like to ask the, the board to approve his variance. We're talking this much in a world that's this big. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else?
I live at 1407 Washington Street. And I was here previously at another planning commission meeting about the project at Fourth and Washington, which this, which really was impacting the neighborhood as far as parking, height, and so on and so forth. And this commission was so quick to approve it, I wonder if the judgment against Mr. Davis is punitive here, because what, that foot and a half or whatever it happens to be is not impacting the neighbors or adjacent buildings. So what's the deal? In fact, it might even make it a little bit quieter, the sound that...
No, it doesn't. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay. Sally, Sally. Okay, well, then, I'll just go back.
Excuse me.
I live not that far away, and I hear music...
Would you direct, excuse me, would you direct your comments to, to the microphone, sir, and not talk to the audience?
Yeah.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. No, I, I just don't understand how it works here sometimes, that's all. It's, to me, this whole thing about a foot and a half or whatever is much ado about nothing. It's, it's not a structural problem. Adjacent buildings, does not affect the adjacent buildings of, as far as, you know, the style, so on and so forth. It's not next to another building where someone's looking out their bedroom at, you know, a wall, so. I, and plus, I enjoy the music, and Buster's been very, I mean, accommodating to people. You can go there, it's a free venue, and the music is, I don't think, there's nothing else like it in Calistoga. So it would seem to me it's not for the commission just to accommodate that foot and a half and allow this, allow it to happen and continue without much more expense from him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioners, my name is Alex Sebastian. I don't live in Calistoga. I live in Santa Rosa, and I came to hear about this wonderful opportunity to visit Calistoga, bring my money here, spend it beyond at Buster's, you know, get warmed up at Buster's and go into town and have dinner, do other things, and bring my out-of-town money here. I think that should be a good thing. That's kind of behind, beside the point, I'm sure. As far as the noise, I'm sensing from the couple of comments that preceded me that perhaps it's a standards problem. Some people are more sensitive to noise. I'm suspecting that it's within the standards that the city has imposed on noise.
I don't mean to be rude or interrupt you, but we're really not here about noise, and that's been illustrated, and I, it's my fault for not cutting it off in the beginning. We're, we're really here about the variance and whether it should or should not be approved. Noise is not involved with this decision at any level for any reason. Just, just wanted to illustrate that to you, that's where you're going. If you have something about the structure...
I'll move on to the structure, then.
Thank you very much.
I think the structure is an attractive structure. I think it's immediately adjacent to a already existing structure that seems significantly bigger. It's solid, it blocks the view of it. It seems somewhat maybe dwarfed is an exaggeration, but it's certainly tucked in right next to it. I know there's some technical ways that you measure those things, but it's, from a human observation perspective, it seems to fit in there nicely. You don't see it from the street. It is, it is attractive. I think it seems that Buster's already been penalized. I don't know the details, but I know I wasn't able to come over for a few weeks because of the, I got the feeling the whole business was shut down. I don't know that for a fact, but that's what I understood. I may be wrong about that. But I think it's, there's a lot of magic that goes on at Buster's, and I think it's an insignificant departure from the standard that, I know you're bound by these four findings that you have to make, but we are humans here, and I think a little human consideration for what you're up against here is just not a significant departure from the standard. I think if you all visit it, you'd probably agree, and I just hope you can be kind here and find some way to allow this to continue. I'd like to continue to come and do my business here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Dennis?
Dennis McNay, Foothill Boulevard. Just one last thing on the noise. I don't think the structure was ever completed, so there, there's no real way to evaluate that anyway. But variances are variances. There's a reason for variances, I assume, and that's to make a decision on needed or changes, because that's why you have them. In a building that's on Lincoln Street, yeah, I could understand a limit on the height of that, and, but a building that's on the back of a property that faces a hill that goes pretty much straight up and down, I don't think it's going to affect anybody's view, and I think that's mainly what the height limit's concerning. And so the impact is to who? Nobody I can see. But anyway, yeah, I think that's why you have variances, because of issues just like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else?
Maxine Miller, 2412 Foothill Boulevard. I'm not really close to Buster's, maybe just a quarter of a mile down the road. I just wanted to put my two cents worth in to say how much what he does benefits us music lovers, musicians, and he does it at no cost. And I just want to comment on the generosity of these two people, Barbara and Buster. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and reserve the right to open it if we need to. Comments, questions from commissioners?
I think it's easy, easy to say that every single person in this room and in this town loves the food and the music and appreciates everything that applicant has done for the town and the community. And it's also easy to say that every single person in this community, these same findings would be applied identically the same. So it's like me asking, getting a speeding ticket for 65 miles an hour in a 45 and asking the judge to change the penal code up to 65 miles an hour so I could continue to do it. So it's not objective, it's more subjective. We have a set of guidelines and codes that we have to analyze. And again, it would be the same for every person in the community. That's the job of what we do.
Thank you.
Excuse me, but I forgot a variance on the speeding ticket. Yeah, that's not a speeding ticket.
Okay. Commissioners, any additional comments, questions?
I might ask Mr. Davis, how much would it cost to bring the roof into conformity?
Pardon me?
How much would it cost to bring the roof into conformity?
Well, you've got to realize, only half of it, because of that slope.
Mr. Davis, could you come to the microphone, because it's on recording, so people can hear you. Thank you very much.
It's only half of it. You know, cost-wise, I don't know. It's only half of it because that's about where the slope begins to drop, is about half of the building. So if you took half of the building and you brought it down 2 feet, leaving the other up at 15 feet, you run into a visual problem as far as how are you going to make that work to put a roof on it? That's the issue, or one of the issues, is that if you brought it down, the one end lower than the upper end, how would you make that? Because the upper end is fine. It's the lower end because of the 2' difference between top and bottom. So in answer to your question, let me put it to you like this. I've spent over $100,000 to get to where I'm at right now.
Just on that structure.
What you see out there right now, it's well over $100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Davis, would, maybe, could you just remain, in case there's other questions for commissioners, so you don't have to get up and down, up and down?
Sure.
Anyway, commissioners, any additional questions?
Yeah, I have a question. When you lowered from the original 26 feet that you had constructed, did you consult with anyone as to how far you had to lower it?
I lowered it down to the plans.
The plans called for...
Plans called for...
14 feet.
14 feet. Well, it called for 12 feet at the upper end, and it, on, on the plans, it showed the elevations, because I had a topo done of that about five or six years ago. So the elevations were on the plan. They weren't magnified, the elevations from top to bottom, but they were there. So when the architect drew it and the engineer engineered it, he's the one, MKM, are the ones that put the elevations in and put up a, a design of showing what the arch structure would look like. And then I took it from there with the length and the width and went and did the rest and built the rest of it. So it had it like it is right now presently today, with the upper end being what it is and the lower end being what it is. And there's never been any issue up until now about the difference from upper to the lower, only that they recognize, yeah, there is an elevation difference. Well, yeah, and it was on the plans from the beginning.
And so when you did your original construction, why did you build it 26 feet high?
That was a mistake on me. I wanted it higher, plain and simple. I wanted it higher, and the plan should not allow it for being high, so I took it down. You know, I took it down, when I took it down, I took it down to where, where it is right now.
Okay. Is, what Mr. Davis is saying is that in his opinion, what it stands at now complies with his original permit?
Absolutely.
And I am having difficulty understanding that. My understanding beside that is that the original permit was all a wood structure so that you couldn't do arches.
So the, the original permit, the elevation showed it on a, on level grade? So, so it did show it as being 14 feet on the original permit documents for the building permit?
14 feet at the back and 14 feet at the front.
It showed it on level grade, so it showed it all around being 14 feet.
Okay.
So it is in fact out of compliance based on the original permit?
No, it's not out of compliance.
Well, it's basi, based on the drawings that you submitted, it's out of compliance?
It was, it complied with the drawings that I got approved for. It got approved for what it is right now. It showed the back end of it being from the, from the floor to the top of the horizontal beam 12 feet. Add the 2 feet for the arch, on the arch of it gives it 14 feet 6 inches. There was taken all the way out to the end, the 40 feet, at the same level as the back end was. And it happens to be 2' difference, and that's the elevation difference between the top and the back. It was not out of, they did not cite me for being out of compliance. The plans were stamped in an approved set of plans, the first ones and the second set of plans, stamped and approved as it is right now today.
That's not what I'm hearing here.
I have a set of the plans showing where it was stamped and was approved to what I have now, and what I have now has been approved.
Yes, excuse me, staff, please.
The plans that were given to us showed a perfectly flat arbor. The underlying topo that was shown on the site plan was at a very small scale, and there was no retaining shown at the front of the structure, which was necessary to, to raise it and make it completely flat coming off of the slope. So there, there is a height increase that was done and backfilled, and then that's where the solid wall is on the front. So if he had constructed it per the approved plans, it would have just run down the 2' whatever difference over that area, and that's what we approved initially.
Absolutely.
So we, we did not approve a retaining wall at the front and in order to have a completely flat grade coming from the bottom of the slope outwards.
Understood. Thank you.
There was no walls on the first set of drawings.
Were retained.
The walls came on the second set of drawings showing where I had put the walls in, in between the first and the second set of plans. Then after the second plans were issued, the walls were approved as to my engineer. And the plans showed the arches in the first set of plans, and it showed the same arch, the same design in the second set of plans with the walls drawn in that was approved. My set of plans that I have, that I worked off of when I lowered that, came from a, an approved set of plans that I have in my possession right now, and it shows the arches. A 26-foot arch, giving it a 2' difference up from level to the top of the arch. And that's the difference, plus the elevations. The elevations, I'm afraid, were not taken into consideration when they looked at those plans, which I did. plans, which I did.
Staff?
Not to get in a back-and-forth, but the arches have always been shown. It was shown with an open mesh metal cover and not a solid cover. So we have no problem with the arches and the covering, per se. The second set of plans was approved from a structural standpoint in order for Mr. Davis to be allowed to open his business. We got new engineered plans and new calculations, and we were all focused on getting him back into business, and that was the means to do that. He agreed to apply for a variance if he wanted that structure to remain as is, and that's why it's before you. We did approve the second set of plans from an engineering and code compliance standpoint. But he agreed in writing to apply for a variance to see if it was possible to allow the non-conforming structure to remain.
This alteration is from the original application?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Abernathy, looks like he might have something, no?
Were your engineers aware of how the calculations, elevation calculations, were to take place?
Yes.
That you had to take into account the variance and the slope of the property?
They gave it right on the plans. It showed the elevation from the topo that they had. So they drew it according to the topo that they had in their possession when they drew that, and they knew that, you know, it did not shape, it did not go down, that's why they drew it straight across. They knew the fact that it was a two-foot difference in there, so they drew it like that, because I didn't want a building that was two-foot lower than the upper end. So the building was, the structure was designed for sound. It was designed for sound.
And was your architect and engineer aware of the maximum 15-foot height requirement?
I don't know if they were or not. They were to the standpoint when they drew the arches that they kept it under 15 feet. Those posts that are there on the upper side, on the upper end, are less than 15 feet. Now, if you go out further, it becomes, so they were aware because they put in, drew it according to the topo that they had. So was there a point of saying, hey, this was supposed to be this? No. I didn't give one because, quite frankly, I didn't even think about it. That's why I'm here now. But if I were to do another building like that, I would have to do the same thing because it would defeat my purpose in trying to maintain the noise that is being generated and trying to control it with this type of structure.
Staff, on the submitted plans that were approved, is there a finished floor elevation on that, and is it reflected against the topo?
Are you talking about the original plans?
The original submittal.
There's just a shaded area that you have on your plans?
That's it?
That's the area, yeah. So the shaded area at the back where it says landscape?
Mm-hmm.
That's where it was to be located.
So...
And then it was shown to be in cross-section or side view to be on a flat.
On flat, and you can see the grades on the plan, but you don't have a finished floor elevation, so if you don't, you're assuming it's going to go with the grade if there's no finished floor elevation. I mean, that doesn't make any sense to me at all, Mr. Davis.
Basically, we were looking at four posts with an open work cover on top of it.
Exactly, and you would get it to the slope, which has been done.
Right.
But if you're having a flat, I mean, I've been in this my whole life, I'm sorry, but if there's no finished floor elevation, it could be anything that you think you want, but, I mean, somewhere the engineer must have let you down because this doesn't work. I'm sorry, I do this every day, and if this is what you got and what you submitted, and you sent an elevation that said it, I mean, a profile, I'm sorry, an elevation, a site plan, if you look on this and it says that it's flat, it shows it flat, and you don't show any grade, and you don't show any finished floor elevations, the staff has no other, there's no other place to go, and assume it's being laid to grade.
I emulated the grade as to where he had it when I first started building, and I went straight across, keeping that same grade all the way through the building. Why would I want to put a building that is slanted?
No, and I don't disagree with that part of what you wanted, but it's not what was illustrated. That's all I'm trying to say to you. That's not what's here.
Well, I understand what was illustrated, then we should have come to a conference prior to me building this thing and pointing that out.
You should have come to...
Because I built it the way the plan showed and got it approved for it.
You should have come and talked to staff if you had any questions whatsoever, and we go back to when you...
Maybe that's a fall of mind, being inexperienced in the fact of doing building.
Maybe, that's possible, but then Commissioner Wilks asked the question about why didn't you come back to staff prior to lowering it from 26 feet, say, this is my mark, this is what I'm doing, are we good? But it doesn't appear that you did that.
No, I can tell you, I didn't do that. I brought it down to where it was approved, and I signed a deal saying this is where it's at. So I signed the deal with the staff saying this is where it was and got it approved. That was all my concern at that point. And she's right, trying to get open. That was my point, trying to maintain what I had, an understanding where I'm trying to go, and understanding is if I don't, this is going to be the consequences if I don't do what I need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other questions? None? Thank you. Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion from...
Comments?
I've asked for comments. If you have some, that's certainly welcome to voice them.
Yeah, I, my reaction out of all of this, and of course, this has been sort of brewing for some time, I'm most struck by the fact that, had this gone through a normal process, meaning that the designers submit sufficient and accurate plans for what they actually intend to build, none of this would have been an issue because nothing would have been built until those modifications to be able to comply with code were in place. The only reason that we have the controversy is that it got constructed before any of that happened. And the last thing I would say is that, in the comments that folks have made tonight, it's being presented as a sort of an existential issue of, gee, if you don't approve this variance, there isn't going to be any music. And I would suggest that there will certainly be music, and we all encourage that, in a structure that's 15 inches shorter.
Any other comments?
I acknowledge this is a tough spot for everyone to be in, and it sounds like it's the result of some drawings that were not as thorough as they could have been, and an applicant who made changes on the fly, a much taller building, adding walls, and we are obligated to make certain findings, and if the applicant is not making it easy for us to meet those findings with the information that's been provided.
Okay.
I visited the site today, I looked at it myself. I don't feel like it's an eyesore. I don't feel like it's a problem from when you enter town. There's a lot of people who are in support of what you're doing, but you've gone about it in a way that makes it really hard for us to help you through this.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission deny variance application VA 2018-4 as the required findings cannot be met.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to...
Could I just advise the applicant of his right to appeal the commission's decision to the city council within 10 days? We'll send a letter tomorrow advising that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Question, though, I don't know, noise, it wasn't the issue, but did we put a dB, a decibel limit on the noise?
Yes, we did when we approved the use permit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to matters initiated by commissioners.
I have a couple.
Yes.
Not to bring up the sound issue again, but a friend of mine who lives on...
I can hardly hear you. No, no, you turned on, I, a little closer to the mic.
On Myrtle between Hazel and Pine, said that the music had never been as loud in the history of the music system.
We might want to follow up on that.
So I think we may need a sound check.
Check, okay.
And that would be a matter of the existing use permit?
Yes.
Which was pretty thorough in terms of its talking about the ability to continuously monitor...
Just, right.
DV levels.
Though it also seems like construction is incomplete still, so we won't know how the final sound...
And Jeff Manfredi also said that the windows were shaking like they never have before, so there's something going on as a result of that structure.
So I think what we're hearing is that, is that there may need to be some look at compliance with the use permit.
Okay.
Secondly, a new neighbor approached me with concern that it would be wonderful if we could somehow keep the bridge over, under, when we build the bridge over the river, to keep that little walkway under it. I guess that's a problem with fish and game, but at the same time...
Good luck with that.
Is that, there's no way that would ever possibly happen then?
No.
Okay, it's impossibility.
You're preaching to the choir here.
Difficult.
Okay, you must have heard of him as well.
It's all about the fish.
Yeah, all about the fish.
Okay, that's all. Any other matters the commissioners would like to discuss tonight? If not, we'll go to the director's report.
Yes, I'm going to be distributing, or Zach is actually, the agenda packets for your next meeting.
Oh.
There's some reading you're going to be needing to do, and just wanted to make sure that you had enough time to do so over the holiday. I didn't want to drop it on you next Wednesday. So we will be meeting on November 28th, and there will only be one item on there, but there's a fairly lengthy environmental document that you'll want to review.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess if that's all...
And happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, thank you very much. I'll take a motion to adjourn to November 28th's next regularly scheduled meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.